We ready? Evening, everyone. Notice hereby given the City Council of the City of Alpine, Texas will hold a regular workshop at, I mean, I'm sorry, meeting at 5:30 PM on Tuesday, July 2020, 2021, at City Council Chambers at A-03 West Holland Avenue, and the Zoom conference in the City of Alpine, Texas. Meeting all get details may be found at www.cityofalpine.com. This notice is posted pursuant to the Texas Open Meeting Act, Section 1.043 Texas Government Code. Member of the audience, we provide an opportunity to address the council on any agenda item after the determination of a form and proof of notice of the meeting. Zoom meeting guidelines and procedures may be found at the city website. Remarks will be limited to a total of three minutes per person. Please speak into the microphone located at the podium. Say your name and address for in-person attendance. When addressing the council, please introduce yourself by first and last name. Say it aloud the ward that you reside in or have a business interest in. Public comments may be by virtual attendance. Please email your name and at and ward that you reside in or have a business interest in. Or public comments may be by viral attendant, virtual attendance, I'm sorry. Please email your name to the meeting moderator at g.litton@ci.alpine.txt.us. If you do not live or own property in the city, please state that in your email. If you have a petition or other information pertaining pertaining to your subject, please email it to the city secretary beforehand at city secretary@ci.alpine.txt.us. State law generally prohibits the council from discussing or taking any action on any issue not included on the agenda. But if appropriate, the council may schedule a topic for future discussion or refer to the matter instead. Personal attacks on council members or city staff members will be allowed. The mayor city council members may call point to order to stop personal attacks or media disruption. If an individual continues to personally attack elected official or staff member in a meeting, they may be barred. I call the meeting to order, and we'll start with a pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance. United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored under Texas law, I pledge allegiance to the great Texas. One state under God, one unity. Thank you all very much. Please mute your phones or turn them off. I really appreciate that. Do we have a form, sir?
Yes, we do. Councilor Johnson is not present with an excuse absent, all other members are present. The notice was posted on July 16th at 2:30 PM.
Okay, thank you. Now, we'll have the public comments limited to three minutes per person. One was come to the podium.
We don't have anybody.
We don't have anybody? Okay, doctor.
Thank you, Mayor, and the council member. I have two items that I want to make comments, if I can find it. And one of them is of the leave I sent you. That's 9.5, and the other, I think, is 6.5. On the capital school make, 8.5.
I have your email on the screen.
Okay.
You blow it up a little bit more.
That is 9.5, the other one is 8.3. Which deals with some of the proposals that were made by the city manager earlier. And this deals with the spending 1.5 million, $1.6 million to automate the water meters. I understand there's a problem reading water meters. Understand there's only one person working. But if I take $1.6 million and divide this into four personnel, it's $40,000 so they can stay here, not just read water meters but do other stuff. 40,000. 40,000 times four is one, is what's that, 16?
160.
160. 160. Thank you, council.
I was mathematician.
Okay, now, if you take that for a year, it'll take you 10 years to spend that money, 1.6 million. And the advantage is that 1.6 million that you're going to spend to automate the water meters, that money is going away. You're getting hard with that, and the software, which we may have to update periodically. That's additional cost. But these poor people earning $40,000 with families will be spending, will be spending that money here in Alpine. When they spend money in Alpine, that means more employment outside the city. So my suggestion is, I know this thing came out way back when I was mayor. At that time, the tag was $6 million. Okay, but there was something else involved. So instead of spending $1.6 million to automate the water meters, hire four people, don't leave it up to one person. This month, I got one on my bill. Six days duration, which means the previous bill that I paid and what I'm going to pay now, this is for six days. I don't have any problem. Because this is only one guy. So anyway, that's it. Okay, the second item that I have is, it deals with 9.5.
Man, you've gone over three minutes.
Huh?
You've gone over three minutes.
Well, that was the first item.
Okay.
That I had 9.5.
You start on another item.
9.5. 9.5, it deals with the appointment of, so recommendation, not the appointment per se, of people serving the Planning and Zoning Commission. Planning and zoning commission is one of those things that home rule city have to have under the state laws. General law city like Marfa does not have planning and zoning. And now, if you look at the, your ordinance, and this comes with the fact that we are old road city, we can have as many ordinance as we want. Some of them are unworkable, but we can have them. Okay, now this, it could take me a few seconds to get this. The planning and zoning, if you look at the ordinance, Division 2 of the city ordinance, Planning and Zoning Commission, Section 2-201, created membership and terms. The members shall be recommended by his council member. It's a very clearly council member shall make the recommendation, representing each ward and shall be appointed by the mayor, subject to confirmation by the city council. Now, the item that you have 7.5, it does not say who is, it says, planning and zoning commission is recommending. Now showing the ordinance has said that the city council can delegate this authority to make the recommendation to the planning and zoning commission to another entity. If another entity made the recommendation, under what authority that entity made the recommendation? That is a violation of meeting act. Because as you are following an open meeting act, all the appointed boards that you have, they also have to follow the open meeting act. So, I know it's very difficult to get volunteers. All three guys who were appointed or who were recommended, I know them. The person who's going to be considered today, I know her, very fine person. It's hard to get good volunteers, but the process has to be legal. That's what I'm saying. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anybody else? Okay, let's go ahead and we'll move on. Presentations and recognitions. And there's one that I'm kind of happy and glad with gentleman. He's worked at the airport for 27 years, and he is retiring effective tomorrow. Unable, he's unable to be here this evening. He had a family issue, but I'm going to read it anyway. President presented to Johnny Galvano in grateful recognition for your years of outstanding service and leadership to the City of Alpine and its citizens, December 2nd, 1993 to July 2021. And that's the practice going to be presented to him for his retirement. And he's one of the, well, there's one other one that thinks got more seniority than he does. True, but that's, he's been around for the city for a long time and mainly at the airport. So congratulations to Mr. Galvano. Okay, and then we're going to go to reports. I don't have a report this evening, city attorney report.
We had a good municipal court this morning. They continue to have good success at municipal court. The municipal court judges doing a good job of coming up with standard good procedures, moving through a lot of cases and coming up with standard way of dealing with things that we can implement and go forward with them on that way forever. So it's going to work out well. And other than that, I've been working with city staff on various other issues and staying busy. So if I have any questions.
Awesome, thank you. And let's go to city manager report. Interim city manager.
If I haven't talked to you already. One second, technical difficulties. And as always, our mission is to provide quality services to the citizens of Alpine. A long time coming, some finance information. We are in the last quarter of the fiscal year. This is kind of our second busiest time of the year, the first being our audit time period. This is our second as we move forward into a new fiscal year. Some of the things that will be coming before council are amendments and notification of adjustments. The charter does allow for us to make internal department adjustments, moving one line item to another to balance it out. But we do have some amendments that will need to be addressed. The first one is multiple departments and funds. Little background, we operate different funds, and each fund has different departments. We'll evaluate the overage and underage of salaries and overtime. It has been a very busy year in light of everything that the city has gone through with our winter vortex, our lovely weather that's prevented some of our paving, just, just, just an overload of water leaks, sewer backups, people running into our fire hydrants. We do have an issue with the airport currently at, they're at 100% of their salary, which means technically the next five periods are all going to be over what has originally been budgeted. This will have to be amendment amended. We will also have to adjust some of the overtime and some of the other departments, specifically our utilities. They do have a little bit of extra salary. The reason why these are amendments is because our charter specifically says that if it deals with salaries, it has to be by ordinance, which makes it an amendment. So it will be presented to you with a first and second in a public hearing. We will also reviews, of course, all the other departments and line items. Right now, the big ones that stand out are utilities and our airport are hot. We will amend properly to record the changes between the awarded grants and the remodel contract. This will be an ordinance. The line items that get adjusted are actually in an internal spreadsheet. When one event doesn't fulfill or use all of their funds, sometimes we move some of that to an event that that needs that extra little advertising. Maybe they're taking a different turn using it for historical. It's a lot of internal procedures, but we want the council to be aware of those as well. The remodel contract, it has been approved. We will just amend the budget by the specific members so that that is locked in and moving forward for any other individual who comes in. Multiple department and funds to evaluate and amend for an addition of liability and property insurance. Prior, we had what we call kind of a lump sum. We budgeted a lump amount in a non-departmental account, and then it was paid across the board. This year, excuse me, I pulled it all apart, and when you, and I can present this to you at the next council meeting. Every department is now visually seeing what liability insurance for automobiles, building space, the coverage that the city pays is now broken down departmental so that they get a better awareness of, okay, your department has additional expenses that are covered. Right now, we're just covering them out of one line item, and I'd like to break that down and spread it out across the board. And the other item is the review and other possible needs for adjustments and amendments. This is actually going to become a bigger item as we move into our big season with paving. We are slightly behind, unfortunately, we've had some setbacks. Never considered whether a setback, but it does not work in our favor when it comes to paving, although we do love the rain. There are some other adjustments for expenses that popped up during our winter vortex time, changing staffing, things that have happened that we want to address and get the public very well aware. And I'm utilizing this spreadsheet, it's kind of the important one. It gives you an overall view of how the city is operating as of June 30th. The first fund, and these are our primary funds, is the general fund. This is the one that covers your administration, your finance, your police officers, your animal control, your streets, your parks, your human resource, your building maintenance, your council, and all of your non-departmental. So this tends to be your largest source of revenue and expenses. I say tends because your water's coming up real fast. So as of right now, we've actually brought in about 67% of what we budgeted for income, and we've spent around 58%. The reason why it's kind of important to know right now is these next three months, we will be cutting larger checks for your paving. Jared Dirtwork has started, if you haven't seen him running around town tearing up roads. He does have a contract with the city. The street department is full force moving forward, trying to get their still coat project underway so that those roads that can be maintained and repaired are taken care of. The other fund was your water wastewater. Revenues were currently at about 70%, and our expenses are at roughly 65%. There are a lot of big ticket items that are coming forward. One I mentioned earlier to the budget workshop is our wastewater treatment plant. It's pulling some of these resources that are, and securing them and using to pay for those improvements. They do have other little projects that they're working on that just haven't quite been finished, so those final payments haven't been made. But otherwise, they're doing well. Your airport has roughly brought in 73% and spent 72%. This one usually runs right on right. What they bring in is what they expense. There's a few items in their budget currently, including a CIP match is $54,000, a little over, that will be cut and pulled to a reserve account. This is the city's matching portion for their lighting construction project. It is a big project that the city's been very lucky to obtain, but we have to ensure that we can cut a $95,000 check next or this October. So those funds will be removed and put into a reserve account so that they are dedicated specifically to that project. There's two other big projects that are coming up with the airport that funds will also have to be allocated, including our AWAS replacement. That's a 2575 match. The city's already agreed to the 25%, so we have to move those funds to ensure that they are available when the state comes in and asks for the money. We don't want to not have it and get kicked off that list. Our hotel occupancy, 101%. That is awesome to see considering we keep spending all their fun balance. They are doing quite well. The expenses a little bit lower than anticipated is roughly 50%, but you have all your big expenses coming up with your Viva Big Ben. I hope everyone attends the last weekend of this month. A lot of our advertising for our October events do take place towards the end of this fiscal year. So we pay those invoices so that those events can get properly advertised and encourage people to come in. Our gas utility, this is our, I call it our powerhouse. It's the only fund that doesn't have debt tied to it or requirements from the state that we can only spend it for. Oops, sorry. They're roughly at 73% of revenue, and they spend about 59%. Randy has had a couple additional expenses. We had a slight pressure valve issue in Fort Davis. He jumped on that and got that taken care of as quick as possible. I'm always one that if it's gas related, you do what you need to do as soon as you need to do it. That is a very volatile substance that we don't want to have a bigger issue. He's done well with maintaining his budget. The last one is our interest in sinking. This is the debt tied to our general fund. This is the one that actually affects our property tax. We have, I just want to go to that next one so that I'm. We have actually made our first round of payments, with, which is why you see 90.9% already spent. Our next round of payments are in August. It will be the last ones for this fiscal year. We make debt payments twice a year. A portion of it is from the general fund, and a portion is tied to our water and wastewater. We've actually brought in 148,103, slightly more than what we budgeted for our actual expense. The positive side of our, our debt, we do have one debt coming up that in September, off of August, beginning of September, is its final payment. So that is kind of ecstatic in my world because it's one less thing we're paying on. It reduces the additional revenue or property tax that we're charging. It's kind of exciting. This one has been in play on and off since the early 90s. The city would go out for debt, and then they would go out for debt to regroup old debt to get a lower interest rate and kind of did this effect for several years. So this is one of several big ones that will be paid off. So that is very exciting, is in my world. A little picture of our revenue here for our sales tax. You can kind of see the ups and downs of how we've collected. But if you do notice, the blue line is our current year. It is significantly higher than most of our other years. That little, the change in some of the years is due to what we have going on in the city. One of the big things we had going in the early 17, 18 time period, of course, was the pipeline. But overall, our sales taxes is, is a bubble. The overall state was impacted with COVID. The City of Alpine really did well considering we all had to stay home. We spent money locally instead of taking it outside into the city. So our sales tax did decrease the way other cities did. It still does fluctuate. You've got your high seasons when your tourists come in, you've got your Christmas shopping, you've got your school clothes, so you'll see those peaks. So currently, if you look at the blue line, we've been over all other years. At the end of June, we had 1,362,140 come in so far. So sales tax is our second biggest revenue after our property tax for the City of Alpine. Those are the two main revenue sources for the general fund. Our ad valorem tax. Our huge slide there is ad valorem tax is typically collected between October and February before you get penalized. Most of our payments do come in the December to February timeframe. So you'll see the huge peak come up in December and then start to fade off in March. And then it pretty much balances itself out the rest of the year. Currently, we brought in 1,821,507, hence our first, our major revenue source for the general fund. So you can see the slight variation in the months, but if you pay attention, in 2020, it really did not differ. The glue actually dropped more in the January, February timeframe, whereas in 2020 it didn't. So these are important things to note as we've gone through pandemics, we've gone through weather issues, and things have maintained stable for the city. It's here. We've had a lot of setbacks with paving. You got to love our guys. They do the best. When it rains, you will see them doing other jobs. They will be out doing the little odds and ends that every other department has called them for. They've had some equipment issues. One of the things we focus on with budgeting is, you know, making sure the right tools are provided to be able to do the job. So with that being said, they are full force. I added in a phase that I think Eddie would appreciate. So the first phase that they do, and this is just to give you an understanding of the process, is they clean, sweep, and patch the street. And then they repeat. They repeat because of weather. So if it rains, they have to go back and clean and sweep and patch again. If it rains again, they have to do the same thing again. We don't want them seal coating our paving on a moist road or a structure that has that because it just basically ruins the road from underneath up. That's where a lot of our pot loads will come from. Once that's completed, they sweep in and prime again. They still coat, and then they fog seal. So this is East Avenue I. You'll start to see around town, different areas and different processes being used. Our public works department is still coating and fog sealing. So you'll see, if you've noticed, the edges have all been weeded. They swept, they removed any debris, they've gone in and they patched. We do a little pray that there's no rain, and then they can move forward. This is South Harrison, this is another street, you'll see some patching. They cleaned that right away so that they can come in with their machine and actually put down the MS to do the paving and the fog sealing. The difference now will be with Jared Dirtwork. So Jared Dirtwork is actually doing a rebuild. They're not coming in and fixing what they currently have to try and get it to last a little bit longer. They're coming in and going from the roundup. You'll see them, they're currently around 74 on the north side. They're kind of hitting different locations. We do currently have a contract with them with different phases or sections that they're completing. Last year, they did a lot of the alleyways in the town area. This year, they're moving out. An important part of this with me is the pre-construction. We all sat down and we had a meeting. Every time we have a beautiful road put in or improvements made, and we try our best to work with the utility side, but water leaks happen, that new road gets cut up, and a tap assessment comes in. So this year, and they do do it every year. I was just determined this year to have a better plan. So the section that they're currently on, there are streets that will be skipped dependent on utilities. Utilities is very well aware that they have infrastructure that needs to be replaced. And they've asked, you know what, don't dig it up because I can guarantee you in three months, we're going to have to cut it for a water leak. So they're doing more of a teamwork exercise here. They've gone in and they've mapped it all out. They understand where they can do the work themselves and where they need to get outside help. We have infrastructure that can't be isolated, which means we need to hot tap it, which means you have a live water line that is flowing while you're trying to fix it. And it's not flowing at a trickle, it is flowing. So we've reached with outside vendors to find individuals who can do hot taps, who can isolate, who can assist, so that when we come back and we replace these roads, there's not the three months down the road, six months down the road. Is it an additional expense? Yes. Is the investment on it going to outweigh it? Yes. Of course, we've had some setbacks. Jared himself has had a couple personal setbacks. We work with him just like he works with us. Our weather, once again, we love the rain, but it does prolong our process. In his case, you're going to see him milling up the road. So you currently probably have some dirt roads in front of your house, if not, you will soon. We evaluate the sub base. This is the Caliche, and then he just, he determines whether we can use what we have if we need to add. Currently, there are sections that we have to add additional sub base. He molds the road. He molds the road, road, and of course, I add my own step here, repeat due to weather. Um, prime, pave and seal code. The sections he's currently working on is section two. And then I apologize, this will be on the internet for you to see. But these are specific areas and blocks. So anything around the Uvalde area and, and Eagle Pass, seventh, that area, you'll see has been skipped. We do have infrastructure that has to be addressed. We want to get it addressed before we have him come in and pull that road up and then pave it. He pulls up road and paves faster than we can get in and replace huge sections of utility. So we're working together to give us the time to get the resources we need to go in and make these repairs. So section two is what he's currently working on. And a little bit of section three. We don't want to delay his process because we want to ensure the utility side. So he's working on both sections simultaneously so that he can continuously move forward. There are still multiple sections that are under contract to be repaved. So you'll see him from everywhere, from the south side, Cactus area, to the north side, back to the east side. He's kind of, we're, we're making them very visible all around town. Um, he goes, then he pulls them up real fast. He can get so many blocks done within a day. And then he comes back and, and will pave them and then seal coat them. So we're hoping as the two teams, three, if you count the utilities, work together, that we will accomplish a lot more than anticipated despite our setbacks this year. And that is my presentation.
Thank you very much. And let's move on to city staff updates, municipal court by the Honorable Judge Julie Cole.
Hello. So I made some lists to go through and then I'd like to hear any concerns or questions, um, after. And so the first thing I wanted to address is our video magistration. We've had great progress. Um, today I just did one with Sergeant Troy and Cardoza. And I've done with, one with Officer Ponse, Ponse, I believe. And we are getting the hang of it. We have endured and the more often we do it, the better we get at it. And, um, the, I'm, I'm just pleased that we're all learning and I'm, we're working on availability so that I can train with officers who are not under the gun with someone sitting right there. And I try to make myself available, but I need to be flexible too. Because I learned during my training hours, the officers had to deal with the bear if I heard correctly. And so I need to work with them too because they're doing hard. So I, I need, I want to be flexible with them and, so that they have access. And I do, and, uh, I'm going to invite Judge Steele to speak about magistration training that he's going to provide for the lawyers and for us that, um, law enforcement will be invited to. And I want to take a moment to give him a heartfelt gratitude because the more that I'm learning video magistration, the more I'm understanding how much Judge Steele has worked on getting the forms organized, standardized and entered into the computer so that they automatically fill. And if you didn't understand the process, you wouldn't understand how much work he's done for us. So thank you, Judge Steele. And so the next issue is magistration training. And Judge Steele is here to talk about a CLE that he's putting on again, um, this year for, for the lawyers and for, for me as another magistrate. Judge Steele?
We have a, uh, well, I'm Judge Steele and I'm your local justice piece. And among the many duties that JP has is to serve as a magistrate. And we're one of the enumerated magistrates in the code. So what does a magistrate do? Well, the easy answer is when someone's arrested, I decide if there's a reason for them to have been arrested. Now tell them what their rights are and then I set their bond and their bond conditions. Now take their request for an attorney. That's in a nutshell. Now, there's a lot that goes into that and the bond conditions are tailored for every offense of each individual. But, uh, those are the overall things that I do. Magistrates have other jobs, but that's what I do at the jail. That's what video magistrate does. It provides us an easy way to do that. Um, but what is ma- so magistration involves not only that, but it involves doing emergency protective orders. It involves doing, um, emergency detention orders, which are not part of our process in video magistrate. Uh, but we have a number of things of that nature that we do. So this training was conducted, I think, in June, maybe it was May. Can't remember now, slept too many times. But it's, uh, it's been approved by State Bar, CLE Department. So attorneys get two hours of CLE credit. Uh, I tried to get credit for judicial credit. For the JP's know the magistrates, but I was told the way the rules are written for judicial training, it does not qualify. So you have to be a certain provider to do that. The State Bar provides for people to apply, to put this on, has to be approved. But it's been approved by the State Bar. But as I call it, a view from the bench of a magistrate. So what does it cover? Just about everything I do from, uh, start. I cover sixteen twenty-twos, which are mental health assessments for people that appear to be mentally ill or perhaps intellectually challenged. And that involves our local mental health authority. So that, that's part of what we do. We talk about that, we talk about probable cause. We talk about why do we have probable cause? It's a constitutional requirement. Okay? And so we, we go, I spend a lot of time going through those. And it's something that, uh, a lot of attorneys don't understand, especially those that don't practice criminal law. Um, they don't, and they get called upon to advise somebody, they don't have a clue as to what's going on. Uh, we had a pretty good turnout the last time. I can do it, I will do, apply to do it again with the State Bar to give credit to additional attorneys. Uh, I am not allowed to provide specialized training to law enforcement. Okay? That gives, that's the appearance of impropriety. No matter how well intentioned it might be, it looks improper. So I don't do that, can't do that. I can offer my, my class to everybody, prosecutors, defense lawyers, law enforcement, prosecutors, and our DA attended the last time I gave. So, uh, Mr. White was most complimentary. He thought it was really good and comprehensive look at what magistrate does. There are a lot of fine rules about protective orders people don't understand. Someone goes, their attorney, oh, my, my spouse is terrible. They do, beat me up, they do, I need a protective order. They said, go see the judge. They send it to my office. Well, of course, I can't do anything for them at that point unless they're in jail and charged with a family violence offense. So a lot of attorneys don't realize those are the restrictions that I have to work under. I can't just impose restrictions on people, that's not proper. I have to follow procedure. So this is part of what I'm trying to do with this class. And, uh, now talk about things I see wrong with probable cause affidavits. Uh, they're presented to me. Uh, and they're getting much better over time. Um, though when I first took office, there were some that needed work, to be frank. Um, but, uh, in general, I think the probable cause affidavits are getting better. We have, um, I still see errors, but I'm gonna always see errors. Uh, that, that's normal. I try to be real common sense about what I look at. Now, the, uh, bond condition, emergency detention orders are something that in general, people just need to know about. If someone's experiencing a mental health crisis, who do they come to? They come to JP, a magistrate. They could come to Judge Cole. They need a commitment order, basically. It's of limited duration. It's for an evaluation, the similar person needs to be admitted into a treatment center. But that's a part of what the magistrate does. A lot of people don't understand that process either. So I try to address all these things. Now I try to address in part what I see coming down the road in the world of magistration. Um, it may not happen during my tenure, but it, um, it looks like it will happen sometime, maybe five years from now. So we're kind of working towards that. At least having a backup plan that we might be able to implement for some things. Now, um, I use video magistrate almost exclusively. Number of times I go in person to the jail or did once today because that's jail made mistake. They closed the session, well, I can't just reopen it because we have CGS requirements. So we have to make sure our documents stay secure. So video magistrate locks the file. You can copy it, but you can't change it. So if I haven't signed anything, there's nothing there. So I, I just print them off and sign them, I did a person, in-person magistration. I've done that a handful of times since we got video magistrate. But one of the real benefits of video magistrate is it creates a permanent record. I have PDFs of everything that they signed, sometimes more PDFs than they signed. Because I only get halfway through magistrations, I don't need that form based on what I hear from talking to the inmate or the accused. So we, we play it by ear. It's age paper, it's all PDF. A defense attorney wants to see it, prosecutor wants to see it. We download it, email it to them. No paper. So it's very quick, very efficient and it stores things. Uh, I anticipate, and certainly I can send EPOs to whoever needs to receive one, emergency protective order, sorry. I lapse into the, the acronyms very quickly. But we can make these available. I'm required to provide them to people and I do that. But I can make it available to anybody that has a need to have the EPO. Um, we do, I, we think, we have created custom forms and sent them, uh, via email and had them loaded into video magistrate. I can add a few fields in its capabilities and we can use that online. So there are a lot of things we can do with video magistrate. But, uh, that's, uh, that's beyond the scope, that's different than the CLE course itself. And just want to show that, uh, the, the video magistrate is quite good. I have used for extradition hearings. Uh, and so we're able to do a lot of things that way. Um, magistrates get to do extradition hearings. Something else you probably don't hear very often, but we do that with other states. People come out of state, they're here, uh, as fugitives. If they're apprehended or warned from another state, we have to have an extradition hearing. In, in short, the magistrate responsible makes sure that justice is served for both the state and the accused. Uh, we are a, a part of the safeguard of the system. We're an independent neutral party in all of these proceedings. And that's part of the message of the CLE. And, uh, I don't know if you want to, I do know you can't ask questions, but you can always call me later and ask me if you have a question. I know you can't do it in this forum. But if you have, if you're curious about something, call me. I'm usually in the office, not always, but, um, it's part of what the, the office entails. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Judge Steele.
And so, um, Chief Martin has led us the right way with our video magistration. And I don't know what I would have done without his guidance along with Judge Steele. And I'm very appreciative of both of them. And so the other court updates quickly is, um, August fifth, we're going to have a meeting. So the first item on that letter that I showed you, we're gonna start addressing to get that ticked off. Um, and in August, we're not going to be having any court. However, in this month, we'll be issuing standing procedural orders that will give us guidance and instructions as how to, um, do our first amount announcements, our docket notification procedure as it goes to, um, interested parties such as our, uh, a tur- our prosecutor and our complaining witnesses and our law in faith, in law enforcement agencies. And I want to make a reminder that you can access the docket, anyone can, about the day before the court hearings. And it's available for anyone. And then September, we are traditionally, it looks like we may be able to do a CLE that will be allowed to host, uh, thanks to Ms. Antrim and Mr. Calderon if we get it approved. And I invite law enforcement to join us. And that is a good time when we have both magistrates there, uh, to make comments and ask questions. And so that we can hear everyone as well. And then September twenty-first and twenty-third are going to be the September court dates. And we are going to start hearing contested hearings and doing trials for people who exercise that right. So we are making great progress to be able to move to that point. And so then October nineteen, nineteenth and twenty, the twenty-first, I'm gonna start making the announcement right now. We have had great attendance and respect from our court users. But we are going to start demanding attendance and we will start issuing warrants for people who are not coming to court so that they're coming in, um, to take full responsibility. Um, and with that, we'll have procedures so that people can also take care of their matters without getting arrested, if possible, so that APD doesn't have to spend their time doing that when they have very important cases to pursue, other things. And APD has been doing amazingly. And I'm just very proud of the cooperation and hard work that everyone's, uh, shown. And our friends at the, the county have been very supportive along with our leadership and management in our new city attorney. So is there any further information that I can gather?
No. I think you've been to the point.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Judge Cole. Okay, let's go to item six, public hearings. Public hearings should obtain citizens' views and comments on the second and final reading of ordinance twenty twenty-one dash oh five dash oh three, an ordinance amending chapter ten, dash animals establishing regulations concerning federal cats colonies to the Alpine Code ordinances. Do we have anybody to speak on behalf of that? Okay, we have none. Let's go ahead and let's move over to the consent agenda. Minutes, financial reports, department-written reports, board appointments, et cetera. Notice to the public, the following items are of routine administrative nature. The council has been furnished with background and support and material on each item and/or has been discussed at a previous meeting. All items will be acted upon by one vote without being discussed separately unless requested by a council member. In which event, the item or items will be immediately withdrawn for individual consideration in the normal sequence after the items not requiring separate discussion have been acted upon. The remaining items will be adopted by one vote. And we have two of them, interim city manager.
Approval of July sixth, twenty twenty-one regular meeting minutes. An approval of job description for Director of Utilities.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull out number one, and I apologize, I don't have the, I lost one of my pieces of paper. Where we voted on the, uh, uh, planning, the zoning committee. I don't, the, the verbiage is not right. It makes it look like we voted unanimous. I want, I'd like to see all that cleaned up a little bit.
Yeah, we, we do need to clean that up because, um, come on, the folks, regular folks will look at it and think it's the council that took the vote on it because there's figures in there.
So you pulled it out and you can discuss it?
Right, take, discuss it later, right.
Or information, I don't know.
Right. Okay, and the second one? You read that one already and so I will entertain a motion on that one.
I'll make him approve the job description for the Director of Utilities.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, motion's been made and second, all those in favor of it, raise your right hand. It's unanimous for? Okay, motion passes, thank you. And then we're gonna move to the information or discussion item. And we'll start with the first one that we moved.
Discussion regarding their request for the paving of a taxiway at the Alpine Castarret Municipal Airport.
Okay.
I was approached by Kay Woodward about paving his, the entrances to his.
Do you use Hanger?
Hangers, that's for. So Kay has a little presentation.
Hello, everybody. Thanks for, uh, having us up here this evening. Try to keep it brief. I do have a little handout, some visual aids I'd like to give y'all just so you can kind of follow along with what we're talking about. So what that first page is, is basically an overview of the airport. It text dot publishes that and, uh, it is, um, an economic impact study. And that was fairly old, I think that was from twenty eighteen. But it shows, um, basically how much. But it shows basically how much revenue the airport brings in. And there's some really good beneficial things that happened from the airport, you know. You know, it brings in 12.9 million is the, is the total impact that Tech dot estimates. Payroll of 4.3 million and supports 81 jobs. This is an extremely valuable asset to everybody in the area, not just the people that fly out of there and have airplanes. It's just valuable to everybody. I think most of y'all know me in the room, but those of you that don't, I grew up here in Alpine. I graduated from Alpine High School in Saro State University, TCU. I learned to fly with George Vos, he was my flight instructor. And then while I was going to school, I learned to do, you know, while I studied conservation work with him. And he kind of got me started in commercial aviation. I'm a third generation pilot, fifth generation rancher. My grandfather actually learned to fly here in Alpine during World War II under the civilian pilot training program. It's kind of interesting. And we had two airplanes on the field at the time. And they both had armed guards, this was shortly after Pearl Harbor. And so it's kind of interesting to find that. But anyway, I've, I've been around a while. My family's been here and hopefully will be here for a while to come. Currently own Woodward Aviation LLC. We have a fixed wing and a rotorcraft operation. We do flight instruction, aerial surveys, and charter service. And I've served on the airport advisory board for the previous eight years. And I'd like to personally invite each and every one of you on the council and any good in the room to come to the airport and view our facilities and our business. I'd like to show you around and, and basically spread information about the airport. It's a very, very good asset, and it provides a lot of good services. And it affects everybody here, whether you really fly or not. It's, it's beneficial. You know, there's steel services for both government and private services. Emergency medical transportation, that's a big one. If, if you have an emergency and the hospital here can't help you, they could put you on an airplane and take you to Milano, Odessa, or Lubbock, or El Paso, and get you quality medical care in a, in a short, short timeframe. There's corporate charter flights, recreational flying, aerial survey, and law enforcement. And also brings a lot of tourists to the area. And those tourists spend money here. And as y'all well know, that's a big part of our economy. And the airport is a big part of that. A lot of people that own large ranches and don't live here fly airplanes in and out. And they buy fuel here and they, they spend money and they pay taxes here. So it's good to have that facility there for them. So it benefits everybody in the city, the county, and the surrounding counties, both private and government organizations. Give you a little bit of background, the city owns all of the property at the airport. The hangars are leased, the, the ground that it's on is leased ground from the city. And so the way it's set up is if somebody wants to build a hangar, they go to, and, and ask the city for application, and they go through all the criteria and estimate the specs. And it sets up a 30-year lease. And so you can lease that ground for 30 years. And as long as you're current on your lease and taxes, you get to use that land. But you still have to pay all your property taxes and leases and everything. But in no way, form, or fashion do you ever own the land. It's all city property. And, and at the end of the term, if you don't opt to renew your lease or if you're in violation of any of your, your terms on your lease, it reverses to the city. That's, that's the city's asset then. So everything that's built there stays with the city, one way or the other. It's added value to the city. So right now that you pay per square foot, that's the way the lease is set up. For every square foot that your hangar covers, as an individual, you pay, you know, on a lease basis every year, you pay for a square foot. And then you also have the county taxes. They'll do an appraisal on it. And then you owe taxes on that, just like you would a business in town or something. Anyway, the, so, so far, the city has been able to pave all the taxiways, so all the existing hangars on the airport. Every single hangar right now has a paved access to an arterial taxiway that takes them to the runways to be able to take off the land. With the exception of the four that we've just built. If you want to look at the next page, I'm going to kind of show you airport layout. Sorry, I didn't keep on myself. If everybody can kind of look at that, that's an aerial shot of the airport and the hangars, the way they're laid out. And the yellow indicates new hangars. We've been very fortunate at the airport. And we've had a lot of new growth in the last five years. More and more hangars, people have opted to build there and invest their money in the Alpine Airport. And it's, it's a wonderful thing because, like I said, for every square foot is revenue coming into the city. And those airplane hangars, hangar expensive airplanes that burn a lot of fuel. And our main revenue at the airport is fuel cells. And so the more aircraft we have burn fuel, the more revenue we're going to bring in from fuel cells. And as you can look at the blue area right here, this area is prime real estate for development with future hangars. There is a 15-foot offset from the fence back here, but there's still a lot of room right there to develop new hangars. But there's no access to all of that area. And right now, as Megan mentioned earlier, we've got a project in the works to move our AWAS. But until that AWAS, that's the weather station out there. And there's a perimeter around that AWAS. It's located out here to the west. And we can't build any further to the west until we get that AWAS moved. And so we're landlocked right now, and the only available space we have is this blue area to expand. So the, the hangars that we're talking about, you know, th, this taxiway is going to serve them, but it's also going to serve any future development hangars. And there are several people that are interested in building, but they don't want to get into the situation that we're in, not being able to get the aircraft in and out of the hangar when it rains, or when it's muddy, or sows, or whatnot. A little bit of information about it, there's a picture here. You can see these hangars. There's a complex of four hangars. I, I've actually only have two of them. And friends and partners, the Choplissens, have the other two hangars. And so, you know, there, there, it's not just one owner in this building. There are multiple, multiple structures here. And then it's also going to benefit a lot more people to have access, you know, back there into those hangars. So we actually built these hangars starting in 2018. We, we went through planning phases and everything for, oh, almost a year before that, but actually started in 2018 and completed in 2019. So we've actually had some time surpassed that we may do without pavement for, for off-field aircraft, for big tires and some of the, some of the aircraft that we operate on ranches and stuff, we've been able to hang there. But we designed these hangars for, for big aircraft, and there's large doors on them, larger than any other T-hangers out there. We can put twin-engine aircraft in there that burn a lot of fuel and go fast and bring a lot of money in to the city. And right now, we can't, can't utilize that just because we can't put them in the hangars. And so we, we, we spent roughly $450,000 on these, these hangars. And like I said earlier, that is all city asset. We get to use it for 30 years, but at the end of that, it's, it's going to be on city property, whether we sell it to somebody else. It's here to stay with Alpine, and it's going to help Alpine bring in money from, from now on. So I just want to emphasize that it's, it's not just somebody's big toy box out there. It's, it's an important part of the economy, an important part of our business. Since 2020, we've paid ground leases on it. We originally had 14,000 feet. We were going to expand the hangar further to the west. But with budget cuts and material availability, anyway, we reduced it down to 7,200 square feet, of which we, we reduced it to about half of what we were originally going to build. And we're, we would like to continue to build that in the future, but if we're not going to be able to get aircraft in and out of there, we're going to have to put that on hold. So when we originally applied to build with the city, we were told that there would probably be some delays for, for budgeting because we had a large project, working on our ramp, getting our ramp completely recovered. We had some huge cracks, and it was a major ordeal. We had to get that done. And they did a beautiful job repaving that. It turned out great. But that has since passed, and we still have not been able to get any kind of pavement there. So we, we built it to, excuse me, no, no action has been taken by the city to, to pave the, the area back there. So we took it upon ourselves to try to start asking questions and see if we can move forward. And we got a quote from Jarrett, which already has good contract with the city doing the paving in town. And they came back with a quote for $57,000. It's in your little packet. I think it's, second to the last page there.
It's what is it, red? Is that what we need to be paved?
Yes, sir. Yeah, yeah. So you know, the, the red is, is what we're actually paving right here.
The yellow is what y'all?
The yellow is this thing here. This is an older aerial shot. And the yellow are actually new hangars that are already built. And they're already in operation. You can see one of them. You can see the skeleton of it being built right there. And of course, it's there. And then also another one next to it. So like I said, we've experienced pretty, pretty awesome growth for the airport of this size in the last few years. Back to the, the previous plan, back in April, had a meeting with the, the then-city manager and discussed the options for, for paving back there. And he informed me that there was a $400,000 line item on the budget for paving the streets in Alpine, which Megan had talked about a while ago. And he explained that him and Megan were working to use 57,000 out of that 400,000 to be able to pave at the airport, and then later transferring that asset to the airport after the paving was done. And the thoughts were that, you know, late summer rains and logistics with the fiscal year ending, that we wouldn't be able to get all the paving done this year, and there would be a surplus on that budgeted line item. Which, you know, Megan may have to answer that, but it looks like since the rain and stuff, we haven't been able to spend all that money. So what, I, I would like to encourage you to, to look for ways and be creative to go ahead and get that paved. And, and that's a shovel-ready project. The base is already there. It's a matter of Jarrett going out there and, and doing the work and getting paved. And, you know, there, there's a lot of showers and stuff that come through this time of year, but sometimes it rains in town, doesn't rain at the airport, or vice versa. They could run equipment back and forth and, and integrate it into that project. Anyway, that's just a, just a polite suggestion that I have. So in June 2021, I, I spoke with Megan on the phone, and, and she said that we wouldn't be able to do that because I guess it wasn't budgeted for the airport, Megan. I guess we don't have a conversation, but you might be able to explain that a little better. And that since it wasn't on the line item for the airport, and then we have several matching grants coming up for the airport, we would be unable to pave it until the next fiscal year. And she indicated that possibly the next fiscal year, we could put it on the line, line item budget and get it paved in. I would, I would really hope that we could try to get it done before the end of this fiscal year because Tech dot Aviation is able to do a 50% cost share. It's eligible for the ramp grant, routine airport maintenance program. And what that means is that the city will be liable for the entire project. But once it's complete, they'll come back and say, hey, this is a good project. It's helping the airport. We're going to reimburse you for 50% of that. And there was some question of whether or not it was eligible because the hangars are privately owned. So I'd had a conversation with Amy Slaughter with Tech dot Aviation. And she was really not clear on exactly what the situation was with the airport. I think she was under the impression that there's an individual that has a private hangar out here, and they want pavement to it. And that was about it. So we shared some aerial shots and talked about some of the airport situations. And they readdressed it and realized that it would be eligible for 2021 matching grant. And so what that means, if we can get it done before the end of the fiscal year, we can get reimbursed for that amount. And then next fiscal year, there's an additional 50,000 that we would be eligible for, for the next year through Tech dot. That means if the city spends $100,000 on eligible items at the airport, Tech dot Aviation will go back and say, here's 50,000 to reimburse half of what you've done. So if we wait till next year, you know, tha, that half of whatever, you know, close to $30,000 is going to come out of that 50,000 versus this year, we can use it and then get it again for next year. So there's, there's quite a bit more money that we could, could potentially utilize if we do it faster and, and get it done. We talked about some of the, the matching grants and saving up some money for that. I'm glad to hear that we're, we're putting away some money for that. We, the, the airport advisory board helps a, address an ordinance to increase the margin on the Jet A fuel several years ago. And what that margin would do is increase the profitability of the fuel cells. And our terms were that we would increase that price with the intent of being able to match these grants and, and further in our money law. And, and we specified, we'd like to set that up into a savings account to be able to match these grants. Unfortunately, it wasn't necessarily put up in a saving account. At least I've never seen one. It's in the minutes from a couple meetings ago, but that, that amount would be close to $100,000 now on that increased margin that we increased the price of fuel. And if we had a separate account, we'd have close to $100,000 ready to match those, you know, projects like the AWAS and the lighting projects, those are great projects for the airport. But since it got put into the airport general fund and got absorbed elsewhere. And, you know, we've had three employees at the airport where normally there's one and two on the weekends. You know, there's a considerable amount of administration fee that this pulled out of the airport budget. Like Megan said earlier, the airport usually breaks even, which is good for the services that they provide. A lot of municipalities don't, don't break even. They have to be supplemented. So the airport's been very healthy to at least, you know, break even and have a little bit of profitability there. So anyway, I, I hope that you can kind of get an idea of what, what we're asking for and understand that we have the best interest of the whole airport and the whole community here. It's not, you know, not a self-serving deal that we're wanting to pave for a private hangar. This is to help the entire community be able to benefit from, from some of the great things that we, we have going on there at the airport. A little bit more about what, what we do. Like I said, I was raised here. I've operated commercially at the airport for over 10 years. I personally spend over $50,000 on avgas every year. That $50,000 is direct deposit into the city account. That's directly to the city. That's not economic. That's for out of my pocket into the city. You know, if you did over 10 years, that's an average raise. That's, that's half a million dollars that we've put directly into the city. And we've trained dozens of students who have bought airplanes, built hangars, and continue to buy fuel. They've moved here, bought houses, paid taxes. Anyway, I just wanted to kind of portray that, you know, we're one of the small businesses here that are, they're trying to, to make a living in kind of a tough area and a really, really tough industry that's super high capital intense. And we've been able to do it, but, and we've never really asked anything from the city. You know, we, we've never asked for anything before. We've had a great airport to operate at. It's, it's, you know, been a wonderful place. It's a beautiful area. But I, I just want to emphasize to you that, you know, you can think about the airport and, and keep it in your best interest.
Woodward, does the city have a history of paving in front of other hangars out at the airport?
Um, yes, sir. Ev, every other hangar on the airport actually has paving to it.
These hangars here, your hangar is here.
Yes, sir.
These hangars here to the east of yours, that's paved. There, the city pays that?
Yes.
Who has those hangars there?
The Eric Harrison one and Rick Stevens is the other.
So they, so he got, he got the, he got it paved in front of his hangar?
Yes, ev, every other individual that has built a hangar has pavement to it. There's not a single exception on the airport. Every, every other airport that houses an aircraft has pavement to it. And I have never seen any kind of documentation that any individual is paid for paving other than their approaches, you know, to end of their hangar, which we've already done, by the way. I don't know if you can see on the pictures. Have considerable expense in concrete coming out to where the arterial taxiways would be. That's reinforced, rebar. We pay, you know, 100% on that. You know, that's, that's land that's coming out to the taxiway. And so that's already, already been paved in place. This is a shovel-ready project, ready for pavement. Any other questions or?
I think you were pretty well to the point, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Jump together.
Appreciate it.
Makes it real one clear, much more clear.
Okay. I have two interim managers.
The noise ordinance. I just want to get this on your radar, and I apologize for not providing documentation. It is not completed. I didn't want to provide something that, that wasn't a, a good quality document. The police department has received several complaints in regards to some of the noises coming from different venues. We want to encourage people to come out. We want them to come to events. We want them to enjoy. Um, we want to encourage people to come out. We want them to come to events. We want them to enjoy the local establishments. But we do have issues with establishments and the noise and how it kind of goes throughout the city. Um, you do have a couple venues that have outdoor stages and, you know, bands come in and DJs come in. I know that this is going to have a lot of feedback. I know there's going to be a lot of public comments. There's going to be a lot of interest. But I kind of wanted to get it out there and let you guys know that this is being worked on and it will be the first ordinance um, to be presented for changes. Um, some of the requirements that we're looking at is maybe, you know, what I believe is called decibel chief, the the decibel levels. When you have a large venue and you have a street band or you have an event, you have a birthday party and you have 50 of your neighbors coming over. It it does create a level of of noise that does affect other people in in the neighborhoods. Um, and it it goes on both sides. I'm pretty sure everyone in this room at some point has heard a band playing or a music, you know, when you step outside. Um, it's just kind of putting in some regulations. Um, the other aspect of this ordinance is is when you have a venue and you have a a big event or something, the permitting side of it. Um, who's responsible and controlling the the noise levels ultimately? Is it the band? Is it the person hosting the event? Is it the person who pulls the permit? Kind of having that clearly laid out so that there's not no backlash with, you know, I was performing for so and so, they should be the ones responsible. I can't help it if my, you know. Amps are, you know, working really well or just to provide a consistent, clear avenue of what the results are if you do violate it. Um. You're going to have a lot of feedback. I I can guarantee it. Um, but I'm just getting it out there. I wanted you guys to be aware that this is in motion. We have had some complaints. The sheriff, sorry, the. Police department has been called. I'm pretty sure the sheriff's office has as well. Um, I'm pretty sure some of you might have been called. But having that, you know, we're going to move forward. We're going to make some changes. We're going to put some structure to it. Um, getting a better idea, how do we measure the decibels? What equipment can be used? What permits can be pulled? Um, just provide a a very clear pattern so that they understand. Um, it is currently in our ordinance, but it doesn't really address a lot of these concerns. So we want to clean it up and get it before you. Um, it will be at the next meeting as as a visual. I have asked David, and I know Chief has been working on it as well. To kind of put in the logistics of how we need to move forward in the best interest. Uh, it will be open for the public to make public comment. Um, you do have two big contenders that that this will affect. Um, let them have the opportunity to come and discuss it and maybe come up with a a possible resolution, solution to the loud noise. Um, I don't know if it affects anyone in this room, um, but it is a concern. And it's easier to enforce and to address if we have that step one, step two, step three. So I just wanted to get this out there so you guys were all aware, the public's aware. It's going to be a change. Um, we'll we'll put some regulations around. And Gio didn't remind me to put a copy in the packet.
Has has there been any measurements taken of the noise levels recently?
I know that um, prior city manager had said about purchasing something that could record the decibels. I have been part of that communication. I don't know, Chief, if we have that.
We did. Uh, we have gone out. I didn't realize this was on the agenda tonight, or I'd have brought some.
Surprise.
Readings about that we took about eight months ago before COVID sent in. Uh, but we. We took decimal readings at, I think it was 100 feet from the source, 200 feet and 300 feet. And took those measurements and I have them documented. I'll have to find them. But I would really like to sense it's kicked back off again. And the other night we had 15 calls. On uh, an outside band. I would like, I would like to get some current meter readings and get to y'all if y'all would like.
Yeah, that would help. So we can set a standard on that.
And I will.
What time? I mean, what time were those calls made? Was it like early? Was it late?
Anywhere from 10:30 at night to 1 o'clock in the morning.
Okay.
And and to, you know, it's funny, the the train is a lot of decimals all over town. Um, actually, you have one decimal meter reading at the elementary. On still quiet nights, sound travels. And what I did is went on Google Maps and you can actually pinpoint a location and go out 100 feet. 200 feet and that's what we went by.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. Okay, item number three, interim city manager. I see that on there.
Um, so you'll notice in your packet, you have a rather lengthy capital improvement plan. Um, this is everything that had been requested from departments, things that may have been added in um, as a city as a whole. We have to start somewhere. Um, I think the visualization is the best place to start. I do give um, credit to all of the departments. They they helped out significantly by trying to provide. All the additional information on a very late notice. Um, there is a cover page, kind of gives you an idea of of where we're coming from and and the changes and the things that we're trying to do on the community as a whole. The first section also includes the charter. Um, you will see this back on the agenda as a resolution for approval. It has to be finally approved um, by the 15th day of the 12th month, which would be by September 15th. It will be put on our website and there will be a public notice so that the public can review and of course, make comments if necessary. Um. The the second part of it is the summary. I I I looked at it from what we've got completed, what we have current and and where we're going. You'll notice your upcoming is like three pages. It's the highest part of it. And then it's broken down by utilities, um, I'm sorry, by department or fund. So it gives you kind of just an overlook. The capital improvement plan currently total citywide is $14.9 million. That includes everything from your basic infrastructure, your wastewater treatment plant. You'll notice, I think I have the five million. I went at the high end of these. Doesn't mean this is what we'll spend, not necessarily, but I went for the higher side so that it looked more realistic, to be honest. And then you'll have um, following it, an item for everything that we're looking at. Whether it be software, whether it be heavy equipment, whether it be infrastructure replacement, whether it be just the tools needed to do their job. Every department looks at this and what do I need? What do I need a plan for? We know we can't purchase these things overnight. Maybe we'll be lucky and we can. If we can, that means that maybe the next item on the list moves up faster. Instead of saving for three items, we're now saving for two. We put a little extra aside. This will fluctuate every year. The one thing that that's different and part of our charter is is how does it affect our budget? Um, from an operating standpoint, most of our capital improvement, the. The effect it's going to have is of the maintenance. Either we continue to to pour money into trying to maintain something that is on its last leg. Or or we bite the bullet, we make the purchase and we reduce that maintenance for the next five to 10 years. You'll notice that that it it will show you a no impact or additional staffing, additional maintenance. It may reduce it. It may decrease it. This will change over the years as departments learn the true value of each item and how it affects their budget. One item maintenance for a year, if you're spending 30,000 a year on maintenance and the item that needs to be replaced is 60,000. You you'll start to see that the numbers come back with the actual impact on the operating budget. Whether it's 30,000, an increase, maybe it's 15,000 decrease, you'll you'll see that flow a little bit differently. We weren't able to do that this fiscal year. It's a lot of information that a lot of us were just like, well, how often do you use it? What's the value of it? Some of our assets are on our asset books, but they have zero value because they depreciated out. We've had them for so long, but we're still using them. So every department has participated. All of them have provided their input. Um, what they feel is a benefit not only to their department, but as the city as a whole. Um, you'll see everything, like I said, from software to tractors to Kubotas, to paving, to whole wastewater treatment plant improvements. And you'll see almost, I'd say probably about four or five departments actually, I mean, they're building alone, they'd like to upgrade. They'd like to maintain it. Um, you'll also notice that some of them don't have a value assigned at the time. There there really is no known value. I know one of them, um, some improvements that need to be made, we just don't know what it's going to cost. Um, without doing a little bit more research, but that's why this changes every year. To allow for those changes to occur, the additional research or something comes up and this item gets completely knocked off. The very last section of it is the capital improvement plan from the prior year. I wanted to include that to show you that a lot of the items do carry over, that they do move forward. Um. Of course, the the structure of it has changed, but every department in the prior one is included in the new one. It may not be singled out separately, um, like building code, wanting software, police department wanting software. It's combined as a city as a whole. Um, that is a larger project that that will take additional information and research and you are looking at a higher expense. But it pretty much paints you a a picture with everything that the city is currently looking at on this level. Um, moving forward, some of the the improvements that you'll start to see in this plan ideally and hopefully. Will be your bigger infrastructure projects. Your, we have to go out for additional funding. We have to go out for debt. We want to complete, you know. A whole north side remodel of infrastructure, all new water pipes, all new sewer structure. You'll start seeing those bigger assets coming in so that the city can start planning for that direction. So this is the completed project. Um, if you have questions, you want to follow up with anything, don't hesitate. It will come back up on the agenda after we make the public notice um, so that we can go out and get it approved.
Correct. Okay. Any questions, council? No? Okay, then let's move on to. Yes. We're going to take a 10 minute break if it's okay with with the folks out here.
Right now with Brian, but sorry.
Okay, 10 minute break then. There's restrooms over here. If you order.
Yeah.
Um, sure. You can order uh, from Gio.
Right now, I'm not going to touch my apartment, my.
Your money.
Um, like I said, there's council with some questions about residency, so I don't know where it falls. I don't know if you are going to come back and try to challenge that, so. Uh, don't think I'm, that's why I canceled the training I was doing.
Okay, let him know. Like magic markers. Stupid skin and then stupid. We'll see you guys. Thank you for coming. And I've popped it open, you know, something that's liquid and that's really difficult.
So what promises, men, to these people, are they concerned? What is this meant to these professionals?
Yeah.
I don't want to have to go back and listen to all of them.
Yeah, and they're going to move money from another, so. Other department. I guess everybody's back now, so we can go ahead and resume except for Gio. Yeah, we're just. You went to get him. We're ready to resume?
Yes.
Okay, let's go ahead and we're going to move to the item number nine, action item to be accompanied by a brief statement effects. Including where funds are coming from if applicable. Action items limited up to 10 per meeting after being called upon the mayor or mayor pro temp. Citizens are required to state their names and the ward which they reside probably will be given to citizens of Alpine and those who own business property in the city. Individuals who do not own, who do not live in or own a business or property in the city limits of Alpine will be allowed to speak. And item that you moved from the consent agenda will be the first one here.
Oh. I moved to 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 move them out of the consent agenda, the privilege of the last six regular meeting minutes. Um, and I have, I apologized earlier. I do not have the. The actual, I'm not holding it at the moment, but I'd like, all that needs to be cleaned up. It needs, it. It isn't, it isn't made clear what we were trying to do.
I think you may want to remove the planning and zoning vote next to the person. I think that would clear it up, right?
Yeah, that's that's what she's doing. Yeah, I need a second. So you're making, that's your motion?
I'm making a motion.
Okay, so is there a second? Okay, motion's been second. Now we can have some discussion. I want to talk a little about, a little bit about this. It doesn't uh, change the outcome of the vote by city council. On the folks that were already, that were appointed to these, to uh, the planning and zoning. What it is, the verbiage in there, it's not right and we need to clarify it so folks can understand it. Council is the only one that can nominate a person for a for one of the commissions, okay? And we're the only ones that can vote on it. Now, the way it's written was planning and zoning, there was a vote taken on it, and it kind of convolutes everything because it looks like the council is the one that voted unanimously on it and then voted on it. So it's not changing the outcome of the vote at all. All it's doing is, the verbiage needs to be cleaned up so folks can understand exactly who makes those nominations and whatnot. Now, in nominating folks from any committee, it's the council that has the sole responsibility to do that. And the ones that nominate are for the respect, a person has to be from their respective wards so that they have equal representation throughout the city. Now, the two at large, different story because they'll be the whole citywide, okay? But it's the council that makes the nominations for these positions. And council is the one that votes it and then move on from there. So all it is, is just clean up the verbiage so that everybody can understand exactly what it's supposed to be in there, okay?
So is it the council that makes the recommendation or the council member of the ward?
The council member of the respective ward, right? Except for the at-large, then anybody in the council can make that nomination, okay?
And then from the nomination of the counselor, it goes to...
To us.
To the, well, why are the other ones going to the board?
Well, that's, that's the problem, that the way it seems, the verbiage, it makes it look like they're the ones that voted and men, and we're just giving them, you know, the final approval, but that's not the way it works.
So, so what is happening is that it's going to the, to the boards to make a recommendation, right?
No, this is the first time it happens. This is the first time it's happened.
So it's, they no longer have to go to the boards?
No, no, they, anybody can come in here and talk to respective council and say, hey, I'd like to be put on the board. Or the council person can say, hey, would you like to be on this board, okay?
Except for the at-large.
Except for the at-large position. But it's got to be from the respective ward because if they're nominating people, then it can be throughout the city, like you're at large, and it doesn't give the representation of the respective ward.
So what are we getting, I mean?
So I think this is a two-parter. I think you're addressing the minutes to get the clarification, and that needs to be solved with this motion. But I think further down, there's another item on the agenda that deals with the same, that the recommendation should be to table because the process has been kind of...
Convoluted.
Yes. That's just a reminder. But we need to get back on track with the minutes being cleaned up. And then when we get to that item, address the issue with how the process works.
Right.
And I'll comment, I'm going to get back to that second item.
Yes.
Okay. So does everybody understand what we're doing here?
Yes.
Okay, so any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, it's unanimous, or votes on it. Okay, now we'll go to item number one, back into the action items, and it's councilperson Stokes.
Number one, discuss considering approving the second and final reading of ordinance 2021-05-03 and ordinance amending chapter 10, animals establishing regulations concerning feral cat colonies to the Alpine Code ordinances.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
Okay, motion's made in second, now discussion. Anything? Nothing changes up, it's just we're repeating what we've already previously discussed. Okay. So, no discussion, we'll vote on it then. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, motion carries four to zero. And then we'll move to item two, councilperson Rodriguez.
I move that we discuss, consider and approve the first reading of ordinance 2021-07-01 and ordinance amending chapter 23, city council, article two, rules of procedures to the Alpine Code of ordinances.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, motion's been made in second, discussion.
Basically, nothing changes, just cleaning up verbiage on that also, and making the change on the live streaming to be YouTube like it used to be.
Any more discussion on? Seeing none, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, item number three, councilman Sandarte.
Discuss, consider and approve the first reading of ordinance 2021-07-02 and ordinance abandoning and improving portions, unimproved portions of South Walker Street located between block 34 and 35 in Hancock Edition to the city of Alpine.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, motion's made in second, discussion? No discussion, so all those?
Yes, I do.
Okay, go ahead.
Could we actually get either Mr. or Ms. Skelton to give an overview for the public to kind of have an idea of what it is that we are...
Yeah, and that's part of it.
Are voting on?
Absolutely.
So as you may be aware, we're attempting to open a small business in that location. There's a city platted street that's on South Walker right there that runs up to the south side of Jackson Field. And so what we were, what we're asking for is if the city, you know, would go ahead and improve and pave that street just like you would any other street in the city. That's what we're asking for initially. If that cannot be done, then we wanted to do abandonment, and we would take that responsibility on ourselves if the city's unwilling to pave and improve that street for us.
Okay.
Would that be a, would that be flowing just to the end of the wall by, by Jackson Field?
That's correct. And so there's a, there's a residence there and then our property. And we've spoken with the owner of the residence there, and he is in favor of either us and either you improving it and paving it for use by the, by the stadium and our business and his residence, or you can abandon it and split it down the middle and fairly abandon it and resort it back to us if that's what you wish to do, and that's, that's what we're asking for.
I know during the planning and zoning meeting, there were concerns on the traffic flow in that area.
Yes.
In your opinion, would this help to alleviate the problems associated with the traffic flow?
As we've worked through the process of the planning of this, of this business over the last several months, you can see in our plans, and I've spoken with you and given you those plaits, you can see where we've made it, where the, where the traffic flows in and out on Walker Street. So that actually, our business would meet Walker Street out there and keep traffic flow right on, very smoothly out onto 118. Without this, then we have to go back to the drawing board, and there's, there's only one way to move traffic in and out of there, and it's not going to be in the middle of an intersection. It would actually be in the middle of that curve right there in 118 is really the only other option that we would have, which would, I think, cause quite a bit of problems. We've been through planning and zoning, they've approved the plan that we have with the traffic flow the way it is and agree with us that it serves the best the way that we have it set out at this point. But this, we were made to believe that this would be addressed during that process, and then later on found out that it was never addressed and that we have, it's a different process. And so that's why we're, we're coming to you this evening is to get that addressed. The business is sitting there, there's a pad that's, that's getting ready to get built. We have our permits, and we're ready to get started on this. We've been working on it since, since last August, and we're ready to get started. And this is, besides this and the next item on the agenda, this is the, we're ready to get started.
Would you happen to have an appraisal of that?
No, ma'am, I don't. I mean, we have appraisal and survey of our property, which, as you can see in your packet there, it shows the edge of the city on an unimproved street there, but that's as far as it's gotten.
Your best option is to be able to enter your property from what, what is the existing Walker Street?
Get into your... Walker Street, sorry.
That's the best traffic flow.
Correct.
For the northbound traffic to enter there, then go into your barn and leave on one of these.
Correct.
Any more questions? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, seeing none, let's go ahead and vote on it. All those in favor, raise your right hand.
Oh.
No, no, no.
So what, what exactly are you voting, that's what I'm...
Is, okay.
Do you all want to abandon it, or do you want to pave it?
Okay, that's the deal because it's a twofold. He said if we abandon it, then he resumes responsibility. The way I'm reading it right now is we would assume the responsibility of paving Walker Street right there.
Let me ask another question before we decide which way to go.
Okay.
Can you tell me, have, has the city of Alpine historically abandoned roads like this?
Yes, but there is a process, and it does take an ordinance to do it.
So how did we do it before then, without an ordinance? We, so, but the ordinance was just for that one piece of property, not allowing us to do it on other pieces?
And this is where I know that skeletons are very frustrated. There are multiple ways to do this. The process has not been consistent. So we have a current process in place that you have to go through where you can ask for the city to abandon. You do the survey, you do the appraisal, you buy it off the city, it's yours, we deed it over to you, it's yours. In 2008, 2010 timeframe, the city did a variance and gave a section of road Arcadia to the Jehovah Witness Church. So there, there was a variance that vacated that road. It doesn't belong to them, it really doesn't belong to us, and it's just an abandoned piece of road that they utilize for parking. The, the concern was, is when it was done, is we kept an easement so that if we had to go in with utilities or we had to do anything, we had that, that access. What the skeletons are wanting, that they want to move forward with their project, but the delays in moving forward have become the issue. So the city doesn't have a ordinance to clearly vacate a property. We can abandon it, but there's no formal process, and we have the actual application process that allows you to request the city, hey, I want this property, I've done all what you've asked me to do, and then the city approves and sells it for X amount.
Did we not, okay, abandon, I guess for lack of a better word, a roadway not too long ago, a few months ago, off of 118? I think what was Deloos or somebody that were, for some reason, their property, their, their entryway that they used to use was blocked, so now they were asking for what used to be a street to be allowed for them.
That does not sound...
I don't, I don't remember that one.
I, I just feel that, that there's got to be some consistency, and I know that there's, there's, there's procedures to go through, but like you say, it's been done. So I guess we just need to decide how it's...
And the last name was Dello?
It was a few months ago. It was, it was going out towards 118, and it's to your right. Excuse me? Avenue K, and it was a public road, and we decided to give it to them because they were going to be using that to get from the highway to their property because they could not go the other way around because that had been closed.
So that was discussed, but I don't, any official...
No, we, we, we gave it to them.
Yes, ma'am.
I want to clarify something that Megan had brought up, that there is a process and a procedure for purchasing of real property, and this piece of land that we're asking for is not real property, it's a right-of-way. And general rule is that the city or county, they don't own the right-of-way, it's an easement, and it's held for public travel for public use, which is distinct for ownership. And the ownership goes back to the property owners of the abutting property, which in this case would be us and Mr. O'Brien. And so there is not a procedure for the city, and under the Home Rule Charter, you're allowed to make the decision to vacate or abandon or whatever, but there is not a procedure for easements. I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you.
And that's what I think was, was when Megan, you brought that up, that there was, you know, the appraisal and all that is for the purchasing plan. But I agree that I'm not sure we have anything for abandonment. And looking back into what we just allowed for that other, this is basically the same thing that they're asking. We shut down a road and gave them that property.
I'm trying to find...
I mean, if you, if you had like around the day, we could definitely look at it. I personally don't remember that at all ever taking place. I remember it being discussed, but I don't remember it ever coming to council.
So if we abandon it, then they would be responsible then for the paving rather than the city would? The mayor says he remembers, it came to council.
I remember it came to council. And again, I don't remember if we voted on it or not, but I know it did come for discussion, okay? And the thing is that we need to be consistent, like councilperson said, because you got the food pantry, and that was a road that runs just east of the building. And so we went and then we paved it and whatnot, so the food pantry could have access to it.
This, this road will never be used by anybody except those two sides. Two landowners on either side that have dead ends at the, at the south end of Jackson Field. So it would be legal for y'all to either abandon it or to keep it, to pave it. So that's, that's really the choice.
Right.
I think that there are...
And what is this ordinance saying?
To abandon.
To abandon it.
I think there are certainly issues, like you say, you know, there's been a lot of inconsistencies, and I know that it is, is something that we need to look into. The procedure needs to be formalized a little bit more so that it's a little bit clearer, but I don't think we need to start right now and have them put their business on hold just because of issues that we've had in the past. We, like I said, we just did this a few months ago, and I don't think this is where we need to stop and make an example of things. I think we need to work on things after the fact.
And what it says here, it says an ordinance abandoning the unimproved portion of South Walker. Okay, there's nothing said in there about paving it, it's about abandoning it.
No, because she gave, they gave two options.
Right.
And this is, this is for the abandonment.
Right, and this was on it, to abandon it, and if we abandon it, there's...
So I make a motion that we abandon, hold on. The unimproved portion of South Walker Street located between block 34 and 35 in Hancock Edition.
And that's the motion?
In the city of Alpine.
Yeah. To approve an ordinance to abandon the road, the unimproved portion.
But a minute ago, we had, we had two of them.
You're making an amendment to the original motion.
Right.
Okay, so...
Still have his motion on, make sure we're...
Okay, do you want to get rid of that one before we...
Yes.
Come in?
Okay, the, does everybody understand? We're going to vote on that motion, and then councilperson Rodriguez has another motion.
Okay.
Okay? So, all those in favor of the motion to, as it stands, yea or nay, okay? And then we come back with a new motion that says we're going to abandon it, okay?
Did she not, did she not read out at the very beginning the abandoning of the unimproved portion?
I think she did, so it's really one motion.
So it's really one motion, it's not separated, she, she...
It's a motion to abandon the other portion.
It's abandonment, so we just need to vote on the abandonment.
On the original motion.
So this is, is the discuss, consider and approve the first reading of ordinance. Which means you have to come back for a second.
For a second reading.
Right, but we don't need to do another one.
No.
I thought you wanted to amend it.
No, and that's what I was saying, I kept saying abandoning the unimproved portion, okay? So all those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Okay, do you all follow? We're voting on this to abandon.
You're voting to abandon the street.
Right. Okay. Right, and that's all that motion says, so it's unanimous.
Right, the first reading.
Yeah, this is the first reading, yeah. Okay. So we need to clarify that, it's just the first reading, and we still have another one to go. But we're moving on to abandon, okay?
That was unanimous.
Unanimous, four to zero, yes. Okay, now we're going to move to item number four, and that's interim city management.
Discuss and approve a special use permit application for the establishment of a retail and alcohol drive-through store. Properties located at 33 South Carco Street. Legal description being lot 1 through 5, 6, 7, 8, and 10, block 35, subdivision Hancock. Owner record is Ryan and Marty's old skeleton.
Okay, I will need a motion.
I make a motion that we approve a special use permit application for the establishment of retail... I make a motion that we approve a special use permit application for the establishment of retail and alcohol drive-through store.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion is made, and second, any discussion on this? Seen none, alls in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Okay. Item number five, discuss, consider, and approve appointment for planning and zoning commission vacancy one ward two position. Okay? City manager.
So, this is the application recommended by planning and zoning Deborah Dergan. I think the council really does need to table this item until the process and procedure discussed. That was the second part of your meeting's discussion. It's understanding the process. I know that different things have been done, and we're trying to understand it a little bit better. I know there's an application process. Changing this back to maybe how it originally was set up, where the council comes in and changes it back. My recommendation would be to table it, and of course, that is y'all's decision. But I think there needs to be a discussion on the actual process of how you appoint people.
Right, because it's.
There are a couple of different ways that people have been nominated.
This needs to be addressed before you do that, because what?
Okay, please come to the podium.
We can't have.
Oh, that's right, I'm sorry, you can't, we don't have a motion on it yet. Okay?
What I was saying, Mayor, is it's, it's a couple of different ways people have been nominated, but I think Meg is correct, that we should table this one until we discuss further the process. But regardless, the, at the end of it, the decision on who is appointed is still a council decision.
Right.
No matter how, no matter how the nomination occurs.
Right, so it all just goes back to what we had talked about earlier in the consent agenda. Clean up the verbiage on how it's done, nothing more.
As it stands right now, does it not state that the counselor in that, in that ward will make the recommendation?
Makes the recommendation, but that recommendation has to be approved by the council.
I'm just asking, does, does it, okay. I'd just like to know that I didn't make the recommendation for this one, and it is in my ward.
Is she in ward two, or is she in one?
This is, this is for a ward two position.
Okay, so we're having discussion without.
Well, yeah, there's no motion on it yet, guys, so let's go with a motion that we can talk about. Okay? So, I'll entertain a motion on this, please.
I knew that we discussed, consider and approve appointment for planning and zoning commission vacancy one ward two position. Deborah Dergan, recommended by planning and zoning, unanimous recommendation.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, now we can have our discussion on it.
Council needs to call each other.
Okay, oh, that's right. Yeah, it was my fault, because, but that should have been done at the very beginning. Okay? When I ask, anybody has anything to say on anything that's on the agenda? Okay, and state law says that we have to let you speak at the beginning.
You wanted to talk to me about this at the last meeting, so that is why I am here. The point that I'm going to bring up is the fact that what you did two weeks ago is not accurate, it's not parliamentary procedure in any way. So, you're putting Lucy Escovedo in the at-large position was not done according to parliamentary procedure.
Right, and that's what we need to clear up, because, see, we didn't know who's at-large or anything. Okay? They just gave us the names, didn't say at-large or whatever, so now we're having to go back and clear that up. So we understand exactly who's who.
So are you going to take her off and allow me to also?
We're having a discussion.
Yeah, yeah, we're having a discussion, because we made the motion.
But I didn't, hadn't you said before that discussion?
Okay, yeah, and I'm sorry, but yes, we just had to clear up the verbiage, bottom line. Okay? And Lucy, we have to find out, is she?
Mr. is at-large.
At-large, right, because that's not saying that. So, what we're gonna do is table it right now, clean up all the verbiage on it, so that we're right on track.
I'm not addressing the verbiage, sir, I'm addressing the fact that what you did is not according to parliamentary procedure.
I call a point of order.
Yeah, she's called a point of order. Okay, so we can't discuss it. So we had to vote on it.
This is why y'all have these issues.
Okay. So, there's a motion on the floor.
I think a motion that we table this matter and have other discussion.
Okay, second, right? Okay, so, any discussion on it, council? None, okay?
So, because she is in my ward.
Right. And, yeah, she's in your ward, okay, so you can, so you can recommend her, okay?
But we'll table this matter at this time.
Right, and then next, you recommend her for that position. Okay, so, there's no discussion, alls in favor, raise your right hand.
But you're voting on table.
The amended motion to table. Okay? You make the motion to table, it's amended motion, right?
Amended motion.
Okay. All those, and correct me if I'm wrong to you, we've got a motion to amend it to table it.
Yeah, so you'll vote on the amended first, and then?
And then go back to the original motion, okay? All those in favor of tabling the motion for right now, to clear up the verbiage. Okay? And give the council, Tandy, a chance to nominate her to get on the position.
It's just a motion to table the original item.
Yeah, the original item.
That's the end of this.
Yeah, that's the end of it.
You don't have to go back to the first one, it's just a motion to table action on this agenda item tonight.
Okay, so.
I make a motion that we table this amended item.
Right, and it's been seconded, correct? Okay, so it's second, so there's no discussion, alls in favor, raise your right hand to table the motion. Okay, it's three to one. Okay, city council member comments and answers.
You don't have to go back to the first one, it's all tabled for that one.
What's that?
You don't have to go back to the first one, five, it's done.
Right, because we just tabled it, so we don't have to go back to, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. So now we'll move to item number 10, city council member comments and answers. I'll start on the right side. Stokes.
I wish everybody knew their laws and their laws.
Councilperson.
Just apologize to, and this is just for myself, not, not as part of council. To a lot of people in our audience today, there's, there's a lot of inconsistencies and a lot of things that aren't being handled right. I apologize. Strive on my part to make it better.
Okay.
I want to thank Megan for all that hard work on that budget, all the information that you provided to us. It's very insightful, and I appreciate the time that you took. Thank you very much.
Okay, councilwoman.
Thank you for the work job, everything was really good job.
And, yeah, there is a lot of confusion with this new law about discussing items. And we had chosen to put it at the very beginning, and I apologize to you, Ms. Dergan. But we'll have to clean up the verbiage again, and give you another opportunity to get nominated by a council person. Okay? We're the ones that do that. Okay, so with that, we're gonna go into executive session. And I'll ask for a motion to go executive session, and the time.
I make a motion to move into executive session.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second, and the time? 7:29. Okay. Alls in favor? Okay, unanimous, thank you. Y'all need a break before we move on? Okay, let's go. Okay. Okay, let's go. Okay.